2020 to order. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers? Here. Allen Bass?
Present.
Ingalls?
Here.
King?
Yes, here.
Mayor Philkins?
And with that, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda as presented this evening?
Councilmember Shippers, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that. Ellen Bass?
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment this evening.
I suppose I'll start then, unless there's a different protocol.
Yes, I just need to know, we need to know who you are, please. And then if you would, please keep your comments, three minutes or less.
Thank you, Mayor Philkins. My name is Michael Hayes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Philkins, my name is Michael Hayes. I'm here today because you guys are, my appointment is up again for the CWTA Board. I don't know whether I will be able to stay on the, stay on the call quite that long. I notice it's a little bit of ways down the agenda. I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to serve the past two years. It's, it's been an honor, a privilege. Carrie Thompson is amazing. She does a great job. And I feel like that the CWTA provides a great service to the city of Cadillac, Wexford County, and certain portions of Mesaki as well. In addition to that, I'm also running for Circuit Court Judge. And I just wanted to introduce myself in that capacity as well. If anybody has any questions for me, feel free to reach out, to reach out to me. I have a Facebook page. We have, I work for Demarest Law Firm, and I can be reached at that number as well. I'm more than willing to take any calls and talk to people and get to know everybody a little bit better. Thanks.
Okay, hearing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And the consent agenda was from the regular meeting that was held on May 4, 2020. Would someone like to make that motion?
Yes, this is Councilmember Shippers. I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
This is Councilmember Ingalls. I support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, so then that will take us to our first public hearing this evening. Marcus, would you like to introduce that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. We have four public hearings this evening. First one is in regards to an amendment to the Brownfield Plan, commonly known as the Plan in regards to the Cadillac Lofts Development Project. The plan was put into place about, I believe about a year ago. However, due to a variety of some unforeseen issues specifically with regards to our attempt of getting a Community Development Block Grant, the second Community Development Block Grant for the project being on hold because of pandemic essentially. Can't get ourselves recertified while all the institutions that do the recertifications are currently closed. We're looking at amending the plan to use available funding to be reimbursed to the city for putting in public infrastructure-related facilities. Mac McCollin from Otwell-Malby, our Brownfield Consultant, has joined us this evening and has a slideshow that he is going to present to council and the public. I'm not sure if you're doing it, Mac, yourself, or Rowan is helping to facilitate. But if you guys want to take the floor, that'd be great.
Sure. Yep, Rowan and I worked this out, so it looks like I'll be able to shift my screen here momentarily. Just to make sure everybody can see that okay. People see that okay? Okay, great. Thank you, Marcus, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is an amendment to the Cadillac Lofts Brownfield Plan, as Marcus mentioned, that was passed about a year ago or so. And really, the amendment purpose is primarily that there's some initial public infrastructure that needs to begin to coordinate with the first phase of Cadillac Lofts here. That original plan included a match for a CDBG grant, as Marcus said, but currently CDBG funding is, is not an option at this point. And so really, what this does is provide for an increase in the budget for public infrastructure investment underneath the Brownfield Plan and essentially replaces like a 90% upfront state grant with about a 40% state grant over time. So it allows for reimbursement of these eligible activities over time through the Brownfield Plan. Just thought I'd take, just a quick check, you know, as a reminder kind of about Brownfield Tax Increment Financing, what it is, and I think everybody's familiar with this, but really, it's all about the increased taxes generated by additional private investment. Those increased taxes are captured and then used to approve, used to reimburse approved eligible activities over time. So you make the upfront investment, the, the property tax, on the property, those taxes are captured to reimburse eligible activities that are included in a Brownfield Plan. The taxes are only captured on that Brownfield eligible property. Y'all are familiar with the DDA that captures taxes in a broader area. This is only on Brownfield eligible property and the site for Cadillac Lofts, which included the Olson Block there, the eligible property. And capture is limited to the amount spent on the Brownfield eligible activities. Again, in a DDA plan, a plan is set for a period of time. Those taxes are generated, identified projects can be done. The own, the maximum amount that can be spent is that which is approved in the Brownfield Plan. And it is the reason that we're back here today. We had a changing circumstance and the need to increase that budget within the Brownfield Plan to allow for those activities, those public infrastructure activities to be captured with Brownfield Tax Increment Financing. Just a quick note on what is eligible property. It used to be, back in the early days, it was just a contaminated site, a Part 201 facility as well. In 2000, that was expanded to include blighted properties, declared a public nuisance or utilities disconnected, and actually, those former Olson's property probably qualified, or does qualify as a facility and probably qualified for blighted as well. Functionally obsolete is another piece, kind of my classic example, is the state hospital, for example. We know it can't be used for its intended purpose. And also, I'm sorry, this is an older slide here, but historical properties were also added more recently. All of those things are there, plus the Brownfield Plan has to be approved by the Brownfield Authority and the governing body to become eligible property. So again, this was set as eligible property back when the plan was originally passed. Now we're looking at what the eligible activities are. In this case, there's kind of two major categories, environmental activities, and I call investigation to identify what is contamination before you buy a property. Protection, what are your obligations to make sure that you don't make it any worse or that you don't expose people to it. And then remediation of a particularly bad problem and difficulty requires groundwater cleanup, for example, those are all eligible activities. The second category, again, added in 2000, was non-environmental activities. And for all communities across the state, lead and asbestos abatement and demolition are also eligible activities. For the city of Cadillac, as its designation as a qualified local unit or a core community, site preparation and infrastructure are also eligible activities. There's about 108, I think, core communities across the state. The city of Cadillac is one of those. So as a, as a incentive to try and encourage investment within the commerce centers, within the core communities, those two items were added as eligible activities in there. Just a little background on Cadillac Lofts. You all, I'm sure, remember the former Olson Store had been vacant for about 10 years over that time, in kind of a prime location. And a lot of conversation about what might be able to be done with that. And Michigan Community Capital was looking for a project to come in. Michigan Community Capital, the developers in this case, the 501(c)(3) of public charity, that's really was developed for public-private partnerships to provide housing for the missing middle, folks that were not low-income, but also were missing within the market, in the markets, for attainable and workforce housing primarily. They're, they're able to combine new market tax credits, federal estate grants, private equity, a number of folks on their, on the board are banks, which use their Community Reinvestment Act dollars to contribute to this project, to these projects as well. Private equity and financing complete projects that really can never hit private sector return requirements. And so they're, you know, taking a smaller margin on that, combining all of these resources that they're eligible and available for to create these kinds of projects. You know, in this case, there's a whole lot of equity being brought into the project, about $740,000 CDBG grant to do a lot of the site work, asbestos abatement, demolition, clearing, excavation, grading, in that case. A million and a half MADC Community Revitalization Grant to support the financing for the project. About a $500,000 Eagle Brownfield Grant and $267,000 loan to take care of any of the environmental considerations on the site, as well as Community Redevelopment Act and Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Abatements. So this project, you know, really brings in a lot of resources. There's also $5 million in equity that's being brought into the project as well here. In this case, there's no developer fee because this is a nonprofit. They're looking to establish these standards. There's a similar project that's moving forward in Boyne City, Mount Pleasant, and Grayling as well, working on these projects, or the Michigan Community Capital is working on those projects as well. It likely won't break even for the first couple of years, and their projected future annual rate of return is below 2%, not meeting those market sector requirements. But because this is a nonprofit organization, they're able to do these projects and maintain and continue there as well. So just as kind of a little reminder, I thought it'd always be good to look back and see what the project looked like, as again, Olson Store was vacant for about 10 years. And kind of was in a little bit of a bad state, some of its areas. And then fortunately, this project came forward with the incentives that were all in place, including the Brownfield Plan. And the Brownfield Plan was primarily to cover any extraordinary costs that weren't for the project, that weren't able to be covered by the CDBG grants or the Eagle grants, as well as the public infrastructure component. And so shortly, the project timeline has been moved a little bit, but this year, the project should be completed. Some of the key factors, again, the purpose of this amendment is to provide additional funding for the city of Cadillac for public infrastructure improvements. There are no intended increases to any allocations to Cadillac Lofts in the project. Again, the Brownfield improvements were part of the original project and part of the plan and is part of this coming in. Often, infrastructure improvements, you know, are necessary. There also were other improvements made to Mitchell, Chapin, and Cass as part of that project that we're going to try and move forward on in this next phase for the CDBG that provide much broader improvements to the community as well, but are able to use this source of funding in this kind of project. Again, the original plan only included a match for the CDBG grant that's currently not available. And as we mentioned, there's a need to initiate the first phase this spring and summer in conjunction with the completion of the first building, primarily Shelby Street and the sidewalks around the building. The additional funding really doesn't extend significantly from the Brownfield Plan that you approved last year, based on a recalculation of the TIF revenues that we did, looking through that in a little bit more detail as well. And, you know, importantly, the local taxure, tax capture, except for the ISD taxes, would go towards the DDA and not to the city's general fund in this case. Anyway, the DDA may capture these funds and do very similar kinds of projects, infrastructure projects. But the great part is we're able to match that with state tax capture under the Brownfield Plan. DDAs are not eligible or available to capture taxes. And one other quick note there, the schools are held harmless, they still receive their foundation grants in this case, and debt millages are not capturable either, so CAPS will continue to, to receive its debt millage. And really, most all of the private eligible activities that were included in the Brownfield Plan, except for a few, have been funded by the CDBG grant and Eagle grant. Those costs were included there for a little bit of protection in case we had to tap into the Eagle loan. We were able to increase the amount of the grants and decrease the amount of the loan through some work with our partners at Eagle, and we don't perceive that that will be the case, but they're, they're included in there as well. So these costs are relatively minor. The Phase 1 and BEA costs will likely be part of this, but we don't imagine that we'll need to tap into any of these larger ticket items just because the grant has provided for that. It also allows for some administrative and operating costs for the Brownfield Authority to be included in the proposal as well. This was in the original Brownfield Plan, and there's no change to the environmental eligible activities. For the non-environmental eligible activities, again, there's no changes to the private components for the project and increases the values for the road improvements and parking, and also increases the attendant interest to pay for any bond cost for that in the amount of $694,000 total principal and interest for that project. So again, the only change to this is to provide some additional source of funding for the public infrastructure costs as part of that. Just a little graphic representation, this is kind of what it looks like if Cadillac's Lofts doesn't have any improvement, it stayed as it was. This was the initial taxable value for the site. This does include a percent and a half increase, which is kind of average for property. You might be able to argue that a standing vacant building might not increase in value, but nonetheless, that's kind of what that looks like if there's no improvement. Again, what happens in the, in the Brownfield Plan is that initial taxable value is frozen, so the Cadillac area public schools continues to get its debt, and the local revenues and state revenues that were currently on the project come in, are still coming, going back to the taxing jurisdictions. When the project is built out in the Phase 1, the taxes increase to this value from around $30,000 to $70,000 or so. And there's a, a city capture and a local capture, which represent those two blocks, and state capture as well. So Phase 1 continues on, Phase 2 builds out, again, those values go up. There are a couple of the tax abatements which end in year 12, 15, and then for Phase 2, Brownfield capture is estimated to end at year 20. And as I mentioned before, the last capture was at 19, but because of some recalculations we did, it turns out that this increase only adds another year to the capture there. Then after that point in time, after all of the tax abatements are released and the Brownfield capture, and these taxes go back to the taxing jurisdictions for the remainder of the Brownfield Plan, and then, of course, continue on after that time as well. So just kind of in summary, a lot of these projects have extraordinary costs that affect their financial viability. This certainly had that as well. In addition, this project needed some additional support in order to be able to, to meet just a minimum amount of financial viability for the project. The cost upfront, and Marcus may want to talk a little bit more about this, but the cost upfront would be from the street bond proceeds, the pending bond, street bond proceeds, and then we would have a source of funds to pay off those improvements at this location. For the other projects within the city, we don't have this source of funds, so this provides that kind of opportunity for the investments made as part of this project. And Marcus had noted that there'll be a future budget amendment, I think, for those upfront project costs forthcoming for council consideration at that time. And again, the capture is only on the Brownfield property and only for the length of time to repay those eligible activity expenses. If there are less expenses, those that, that payoff may be quicker, and they, and we can't go over any of those expenses within the Brownfield budget without amending that Brownfield Plan as we're doing this, or as we're proposing this evening. After those eligible activities expenses are reimbursed, the revenue goes back to the taxing jurisdictions, as I mentioned in this case. They would go back to the DDA until the DDA TIF district is completed. The schools are held harmless, so they would still receive their foundation dollars, and the debt millages are not captured in this case. And the great part about this, again, is Brownfield projects bring in significant state funding to support these local economic development projects. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, this is Mayor Philkins. At this time, what I'd like to do is to open the floor for any public comments, as it relates Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close.
I can go forward if I could, please.
Absolutely. Let us know who you are.
Good evening, Mayor Philkins. This is Bill Barnett, former mayor of Cadillac. How are you?
Good, thank you. And if you'll remember to keep your comments to three minutes or less, thank you.
I will, thank you, and welcome, everybody. Hello to everybody. I am reaching out to ask the council to not approve the proposed amendment. There's a question of whose fault and a mistake was made, a mistake was made, or I know a mistake, because other communities have qualified for CDBG funding in this round, and it looks like they're in a problem with that, and I'd like to know what happened there. I appreciate Mac's work. He did a nice job. We can't read it on TV, unfortunately. And I'm glad he wasn't stuck with explaining the, the amount of money that's needed to pull this off, but I appreciate his work. I don't believe the city's ever done this before to this degree, and I think it's a bad idea. The time period is too long. It sounded like Shelby Street was mentioned. I understood that to be private property, and that would typically not be a problem for the city or responsibility. It appears risky to do this in this economic time. Too much money, revenue sharing, road money is all going to be a problem, and it should be the responsibility of whoever created this. I live up on Stimson Street. Our road is in disrepair because money's not given to your street guy, who does excellent work. We have Harmel up here, Chestnut on the other side. There's too much money going into the downtown, and the neighborhoods, in my opinion, are being ignored and not put to the priority they should be. So this project should have been your highest priority, and it looks like there's a concern that's not being explained to the public properly, and that this investment's too much, whether it's 20, 25, or 30, it's too long. It's a charitable corporation that might not be in place in five years. They don't really have skin in the game. I would bring the banks in that have already funded it and prove to them that this is a good idea, but this should have been secured already. Please vote no on it. I do appreciate you giving me time tonight, and I want to thank you for your efforts on everything you folks are doing down there, but I would ask that you approve this and that you're, you take steps in another direction. This goes in line with, I know I'm not supposed to mention the water and sewer, but there's no roads being fixed, there are no roads being fixed right now, so those rates are too high. And I don't have to have my comments put in that section tonight. I'll just leave it at that. I'm under my three minutes. But I would ask you and let you know that a lot of people have asked me to call, and they don't want to come forward. I am for them. I'm coming forward for my neighbors. We would appreciate money spent on streets, in neighborhoods, and to not extend yourself to almost a million bucks. That is 3 million plus another almost $900,000 of tax dollars for this, this project. And so, looks good. And I appreciate you giving me this time again. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I hope you cut everyone else off at the three-minute mark.
I will. Okay, not hearing anyone else, I would like to open it up for questions for Mac from the council or any discussion from the council.
This is Councilmember King. One of my many concerns right now is in relation to the grant that was part of the plan that was originally approved. And I remember Mac indicating to me, I think, two, two meetings ago, that we always could amend the Brownfield Plan at a later date. If we amend it now, then we funded the project through this. There's no way in the world we'll get approved for the grant. And I'd really like to make sure that if it's just a matter of doing one final survey to get certified, which has been indicated to us, why wouldn't we want to go through that process, especially with the state opening up to a good extent up this way? I don't know if that means resources of the state, people will be working up here, state employees for that type of survey, but I don't want to get the cart before the horse. I don't want to fund something that we planned on being funded by this grant and then turn around and use, I'm concerned that we're thinking about using our street bond money for this project.
Councilmember King, I just wanted to respond to one item. We can't amend the plan. There is a timeframe in which the approval needs to take place, and that's kind of up to MADC, in order to get these qualified and conduct the activities. There is legislation which, which allows for activities to be conducted and then included in a subsequent plan, but there's a tight look-back provision or a look-back provision for that. And so that's one of the reasons to come forward now, is we have sort of a belt and suspenders approach, to be able to have this covered and approved, and then continue that plan. We had a conversation with MADC, and Marcus may add on to this as well, understanding what the situation is needing to move forward with this particular component, but I don't, and Marcus may address that, but I don't think that, that releases our opportunity or possibility for CDBG grant for the rest of the project, all around Mitchell, Cass, and Chapin, but Marcus may want to add on to that.
Yeah, Steve, thank you. Councilmember King, thank you for the question. And Mr. McCollin, I appreciate your response. And to just kind of add on to it, I would concur that in the follow-up meeting that happened last week with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and specifically those folks that are responsible for facilitating the, the Community Development Block Grant process, which is a federal grant, they seem to be very, very much in favor of us going down the path of amending our plan now in order to basically take care of the portion of public infrastructure that needs to be done from a timing perspective sooner versus later in order to match up with Phase 1 of the overall project, which is the construction or building one, knowing that we're trying to get ourselves back into the hopper, if you will, for getting certified by the state in order to then apply to receive a second Community Development Block Grant for the purposes of funding the, the balance or the remainder of the public infrastructure pieces, as it would then sort of line up or connect or correlate with the building.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Maybe I'll just reiterate a little bit.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
No.
Can you hear you?
We can hear you, Owen.
And one of the, Marcus, Owen, can you hear us now?
I can hear everybody. Why, did, did something happen? Did you guys catch me?
Yeah, you guys, there we go. Yep, you guys blew it out.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. We lost our internet connection for some reason. It spiked out and then now it's back, so you're going to have to catch me up in the last couple of minutes, and I think there was a question that relates to budget, so if that question could be repeated, I'd be happy to address that.
Yeah, Councilman King, why don't you reiterate that question if you'd like?
As I indicated, I, first time I found out tonight that we were going to front the infrastructure through pending street, street bond proceeds, and that there will be future budget amendments cost forthcoming, and I'm concerned about approving something that we don't even have the funds for yet, one, and two, we haven't identified when those funds come in, how they're going to be allocated. I, I think we're putting the cart before the horse again. I, I don't even know how we could approve a budget if we're going to be using money of the city to pay for these costs. I think we need more information.
And one note, one note that I provided was that, you know, the brownfield plan is like a budget document. It's an enabler. You can only be reimbursed for those activities that you spend. Those spending decisions may be different and require different action, but this is enabling to allow us to receive tip revenues from outside sources if those expenditures are made.
Yeah, so here, here's my perspective, I guess, from a budget perspective, Steve, and it's, it's Councilmember King, sorry.
Steve's fine.
Yeah, okay, okay, I want to be respectful, but the, these are public infrastructure street investments that we're making for this project. These are street and infrastructure investments that we would be making at some point regardless of whether this new project was going in the ground or not. Shelby Street was full of potholes three years ago. The, you know, there's some sidewalk repairs that need to be done, and this, this will provide those enhancements. Part of it is certainly to blend some of the sidewalks into elevations and things where the projects are going, but these types of infrastructure and street investments are eligible activities to be paid for directly from Act 51 street dollars, both the street portions and, and the portions of what, what Act 51 refers to as non-motorized investment, i.e. sidewalks or bike lanes and things like that. Those are, those are eligible expenses for Act 51 dollars that we would have to, to address and identify to do these streets regardless, really, of this, of this project. So from, from my perspective, that's a, I think, a really important point, so that people don't assume that we're investing in the private portion of that property. These are street dollar eligible costs even outside of this project. So what this does then is we can, we can budget for those once we get final designs and phases and, and timing, which, which is coming and coming up quick. We can do that and, and budget for those similar to what we would do for a street project. And again, Shelby Street, you know, needed to be fixed no matter what, so we can do that. We can repay those portion of the, of the street improvement bonds back either with, you know, the, the street funds basically can supplement or, or provide the, the source of funds if there's something different than what is, what is coming in from the capture. If the, if the timing of ramping up the, the taxable value so that the capture goes in accordance with what the projections are, then we can utilize available funds to, to pay those back, and then as the capture comes in, we can reimburse those funds to, to be able to further utilize then for additional street investment. This is similar to what we would do really with any grant-funded street project. It's just, it's a little bit different source of funds. The source of funds instead of being a, you know, kind of a one-time grant is being provided then from the tax captures, really almost 40% of which are, are state dollars. So, you know, from, from my perspective, that provides me that comfort level that we're utilizing then a state source of revenue via state captures and, and school captures where the school aid fund then keeps the school whole, we're able to use those funds from the state level to pay back the cost of public street and non-motorized investment that we would have had to make anyways.
One, and Owen, maybe this will go in. One of the questions I have that, that's not a brilliant question for me, but one of the many calls I received today are from other developers saying, you know, the city has not offered a plan like this for us and our developments, and if we have developments on streets that need repairs, we have to get in line for the city's capital improvement plan in order to be in line for the street bond money. And they're saying there's an unfair competitive advantage for the city extending itself to the point it has for this project, and, and they see the change from relying on a, a grant, which is wonderful, to the city actually fronting it and becoming a partial bank for the development, because it will cover parking, it will cover streets around that other developers don't have the advantage of, or when they developed under a brownfield plan did not get, and I'm going to say this, that sweet of a deal from the city, and, and I think perception is critical.
Councilmember King, this is, this is Marcus, just jumping in really quick, and I think that you raise, or whoever called you on that raises a really good question that I'm going to try to clarify, and then I'm going to ask Mac to maybe try to clarify even, even better than me, but I can, I can attest that, that the, the brownfield option or opportunity as a, as an incentive, we look at, at how that could interplay with, with any development project. You know, there are certain key factors that any project would have to, have to meet, key criteria in order to be eligible to receive a brownfield incentive, and then once they do receive an incentive, the next biggest thing that has to be in place is the overall value of what the project is. What, what is the improvement that they're making, the private improvement? What is the value of that project, and, and can the value of that project be great enough to do something incredible, something transformational, like what Cadillac Lofts development is able to do in terms of being large enough from a value perspective to be able to provide this kind of available resource for these public infrastructure pieces to, to go into place? There are a couple of projects that come to my mind that I've been working off and on with over the last couple of years. One of them is, is an industrial, of an industrial nature, and at one point or another, there was the thought perhaps we put a brownfield around the whole property and utilize the value of an expansion of what they're going through to facilitate creating a new public parking area with access to Riverwalk and some other things, but the, the overall value, unfortunately, of, of what their improvements are, don't appear to be near where they would need to be in order to make that kind of a program or project actually work, and that's where Mac, if I could hand the torch back to you maybe to clarify a little bit, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think so. I, I think it's a tremendous advantage for core communities to have this additional public infrastructure as an eligible activity, and each of the projects that we've worked on, you know, so far in there with, you know, 412, Cops Mitchell, a number of these, you know, took advantage of some of those activities for site preparation, but that weren't large infrastructure needs as those projects, as we understood them or was even being talked about. You know, the Raven included a sewer connection, so there were some, some opportunities there as well. Mitchell Bentley is one that does have some, it was in the brownfield plan, it's speculative right now, but was, was approved, that there's some opportunity for rail spur or other public improvements as part of those projects. So we try and look at those opportunities in each of the projects where there's that broader benefit, not only directly to the project, but also to the community as well, and there just hasn't been that many opportunities in the, in the development projects that have, that have come before us at this point in time for these kinds of public infrastructure improvements, but I think that we're always looking at that as, oh, and it says, there's another way to bring in outside money. You can take the money that you would spend on that infrastructure project, get that reimbursed, and then reallocate those Act 51 dollars to other projects throughout the community that, that may be useful as well. So we try and look at that for each of the projects, but there haven't been that many projects that, that I'm aware of that have been brought, brought forward that had a, a, a opportunity like that for infrastructure.
Well, and Mac, this is Marcus. I think that, you know, there's another mixed-use project that, that is being talked about within the same downtown area, and they're actually looking currently at a different incentive tool through the commercial, I want to say it's the commercial rehabilitation exemption, and that exemption essentially eliminates the ability for a brownfield to be put in place where, whereby there's not going to be enough tax revenues, at least how it's currently kind of scratched out on paper. That can change as, as, as everything evolves and we try to figure out how, you know, all the moving pieces will kind of come together for the purposes of, of making this development work. That very well can change, I mean, look at the different incentive, one similar to what Cadillac Lofts looked at and thereby freeing up the availability of, of tax proceeds for it, but, you know, I think as, as Owen said, just to iterate that as well, if we have the opportunity to get reimbursed for dollars that are going to help improve our, our streets and sidewalks and whatnot that otherwise we wouldn't have the opportunity to get reimbursed for, you know, we, we absolutely want to, you know, sort of jump at that as best as we can, and, and therefore free up additional dollars to do, you know, more roads, more sidewalks, more, more pathways over time through the reimbursement, because otherwise those dollars, you know, don't get, don't get reimbursed at all, excuse me, as they would in for other parts of the, you know, other parts of the community, and other parts of the community that are saying, well, hey, you know, we really need our, our roads done as well. It's, it's not that we have our heads in the sand, you know, we're only able to capitalize on the fact that, that there's all of this private infrastructure being put in place, that being the Cadillac Lofts development, and we're basically, you know, jumping on, jumping on that bandwagon to utilize that, that program to, to fund these improvements. So, I don't know, Mac or Owen, if I confuse things or clear them up, but hopefully, hopefully I didn't confuse them too much, and hopefully I didn't lose internet again.
And I, I just want to add on one thing. I get a chance to work in a lot of communities in northern Michigan, and I think Cadillac has been one of the most open to all the business and development communities to try and utilize this opportunity and tool.
Thank you very much for all of the information, Mac and Owen and Marcus. Is there any more discussion amongst the council?
This is Councilmember Shippers. So the way I understand this, tell me if I'm, I'm wrong on this, that approving this, this amendment is not allocating any funds. It's approving, like when we approve the budget, things still have to come before us to be approved, so it's not a big risk because we're not approving the funds right now. Tell me if I'm wrong about that, Marcus or Mac or somebody.
No, that, that is correct. What you're approving is an amendment to the brownfield plan that would allow for the reimbursement to occur, and it adjusts the brownfields budget accordingly. Ultimately, once the, the bids are back in, which I would hope would be sometime later this spring, early summer, we would then come forward to the city council with a request to award the project, and at that time, we would likely either amend the budget, depending upon which fiscal year we're in, either this one or the next one, to then account for the money coming in and then how the money's going out for the specific project. And Owen, certainly, or Mac, jump in if I missed a step there.
Oh, that's right. Minimum of two more decisions would need to be made.
Before any, before any funds are allocated at all. Okay, and also, that, the other thing that I understand is that all of our part in this is for infrastructure that the city owns and will continue to own, and that had, without this, we would have to do this infrastructure anyway, but with the brownfield, you're going into it using this, the brownfield act, that there's a possibility to be reimbursed for this that would not otherwise happen if we don't approve this. Is that correct?
That, that is correct, but with the following clarification. As we sit here today, Shelby Street is not yet deeded back or vacated back to the city. That, that will be forthcoming, though, as a part of all of the future approvals. That is something that, you know, under the overall site plan, it shows it as a part of the, part of the city, but the mechanical piece hasn't happened yet where it's, where it's deeded back to the city, so that would have to happen. And then, yes, you are correct regarding, you know, the, the fact that the, these infrastructure improvements ultimately would have happened at some point in time. You know, I, I understand that the question certainly can become, well, I live on X Street and, and in my residential neighborhood, you know, that road is, is horrible and needs to get, needs to get fixed, replaced, repaired, you know, quote unquote, today. This project, the project being the construction of, of the Lofts, is, is essentially putting a, a boost on getting these public infrastructure pieces done. One, because some of them have to, you know, have to be done, like the sidewalk has to go back, but, but two, it's because of the investment, the private investment that's going in, it's accelerating the replacement of, of parts of the public infrastructure pieces. That being said, Shelby Street being one of those pieces being replaced is also in, in the same level of disrepair as some of the worst streets that we have in the community. So I, I don't know if that confused or not, but hopefully it, it clarified.
Thanks. Um, I think that's it from you for now.
This is Councilmember King. Based on the fact that we were just finding out tonight that this would be funded through the pending street bond, and the grant of 694,000, it's still not clear to me why we don't have it when it was represented, that we appeared to have it when we did Plan A. that we appeared to have it when we did Plan A. Uh, and I guess I never heard or got the answers to what happened and why we aren't focused on that. I would go ahead, absent additional information, education, and make a motion to table the amendment of the brownfield plan uh, until such time as we have the information and how it specifically affects our budget. Uh, and uh, what are the precedents that we're setting by extending this when we have not gone this far from any other private uh, project? So my motion is to table this.
I'll second that. Ellen Boss here.
Um, I have, uh, I have some questions. I remember that, uh, that, uh, Mac said something about, um, time, um, things being time sensitive. If this motion is tabled until the next meeting, um, how will that affect the project? The project's ability to move forward and to, in fact, apply for the grant to make sure that these things get reimbursed?
There, there's a challenge to, um, uh, moving this forward. I, I, I can't say that a month would lose our opportunity for state approval for tax capture. Um, that was one of the reasons we brought it today, so that we could make certain that we have those pieces in place. Uh, if the council subsequently decides to move forward with a project, um, you know, I guess, I guess my suggestion, recommendation obviously is that this is again, an enabling opportunity uh, to utilize this, a belt and suspenders approach, uh, that if there's outside sources of funding, much like on the environmental side, uh, we did receive a grant to cover many of those costs. In this case, we may be able to receive a cost, but, but kind of the quick answer is, you know, a month would not be killer, but it, but it probably needs to be. I mean, we've had the, everything lined up with the state about to try and proceed for state tax capture approval, so.
State's not working, so.
And, um, and again, um, this is not approving the funds. This is enabling it so we can, we don't have to, you know, allocate any money at this time. And this, there are amendments, the budget often is amended. Um, it's a, it's a living document as, uh, as we've seen quite a few times in the past. Um, so I'm not, I'm not sure if, you know, I, I would really hate to see, um, a project of this kind and to see.
There is a motion on that.
But we have discussion, right? Are we allowed to discuss it now? And when there's a motion on the table, can you discuss?
Go ahead. First, I, I thought we were done discussion, that's why I went ahead and made my motion.
After a motion's made, I, I don't know, Mike, am I allowed to talk about this after a motion's made? Mr. Homie here?
Uh, yeah, I, although I will say that I'm typically on a motion to table, uh, discussion is, uh, limited if not available at all, so.
Okay, then I, then I, I, I'll stop.
Thank you, Tia. Okay, Sandy?
Housemember King?
Yes.
Chipper?
No.
Ellen Boss?
Yes.
Ingles?
No.
Mayor Fulton?
No.
Well, I want to say a couple of things. So I do feel like there's been a lot of good conversation and I have received a lot of thoughtful input, um, on this topic from people. And it makes me happy to see people involved, especially in something like a, a brownfield. Um, it is a big development, so it's not surprising. Uh, my thoughts are, if we're going to spend money on streets and use a street bond, I don't see a problem with that. Um, if I thought this project was going to fail and that the company was going to disappear and stick us with the bill, I absolutely would not have supported this in the first, first place. And I don't see why anyone would have. Um, I'm generally a big fan of bringing state tax dollars from Lansing back to Cadillac. And I don't like what, what we're doing. Um, and as far as, you know, fairness of any site, and maybe Marcus can, can correct me here if I'm wrong, but if any site or business in town thinks that the property qualifies for brownfield and is interested in development, you know, I, I assume Mac at the beginning of the presentation explained what it meant to, to qualify for brownfield and seek those funds. So certainly, um, talk to the administration, um, the city administration. Um, you know, we tried to bring in this development to help the house in crisis. Um, the Lofts ran into an unfortunate situation with the, the COVID crisis. And I fear now we're in a spot where we either risk taking on the cost of improving the streets without getting paid back or the risk of delaying the project. And I'm not willing to make a decision that contributes to that building possibly being vacant for any longer than it needs to be. It's already been delayed because of, of the virus and people are tired of looking at unfinished building already. Um, I'd like to get people moved in, um, and start collecting taxes so we can get paid back for street improvements. I'd like to make a, a motion then, um, if I can get my... Um, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution approving brownfield plan amendment for the Cadillac Lofts.
Support. Councilmember Shippers.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Boss?
No.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
No.
Mayor Fulton?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, so, um, that will then move us to our second public hearing for this evening. Um, Marcus, would you like to introduce that?
Um, yes, um, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor and members of the city council. And, uh, just, just before I, I introduce him, I would say that, yes, you know, if there's anybody out there that's looking at, um, any kind of, uh, improvement project, um, commercial or industrial, um, you know, certainly feel free to, to contact the city. Um, contact me directly. All my contact information's on our website. Uh, and happy to have a conversation to see if this tool, or frankly, if any tool that we have available, um, would, would be of help. In fact, uh, the city council, uh, very graciously, um, several months ago, put in place two very large districts, both on the east side and the west side of town, uh, to help incentivize, um, redevelopment activity. So, you know, those, those programs are still out there and, and we certainly would like to, to do what we can to, uh, to make, uh, to make something happen for folks. Um, moving forward, we have, we have, uh, two, uh, public hearings, uh, both related to a very similar topic. One is regarding water rates, the other is regarding sewer rates. We have one presentation, uh, that covers both of those topics, even though we need to have two separate public hearings. So, uh, Owen Roberts, our finance director, will lead us through the singular, uh, presentation. Uh, and then the first public hearing afterwards is regarding water. Owen?
Okay. I'm going to get my screen shared here and hopefully... Hang on one minute. Worked flawlessly in practice. Well, we're going to watch this version. So can everybody see that slide okay? Can anyone hear me?
Sure. I can hear you.
Yes, and I can see it.
Okay, good. I'm sorry. I apologize. Okay, so, um, thank you for your time. Sorry, I'll get, uh, get, get going back here again. The, um, the public hearings tonight are in relation to our water and sewer rates, as Marcus said. And, uh, this is a very, um, typical process and typical timing in a very unusual time, uh, in our, in our history. So, um, we will address kind of both of those things uh, as it relates to, um, why we do this now and then how we move forward recognizing, uh, recognizing the times that we're in. Um, as we begin, I just wanted to provide council a, uh, uh, this, this graph that shows the last fourteen years of, uh, user rate adjustments in our system. Uh, so as you can see, going back to two thousand eight, so this is thirteen years of actual, uh, rate adjustments and then the proposed adjustments for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So over those years, you can see four out of the last eight, uh, actual years um, were, were zero percent increases as, as we kind of worked through some, uh, some years, uh, coming off three, three years of four and a half percent increases as we geared up for the well field phase one, uh, that was built in those years. And then we were able to pro- provide some real relief as it relates to user, uh, rate adjustments for, for, uh, four out of those next six years. Um, and then as we started to gear up towards, uh, phase two of the well field project that we're going through now, uh, that is when, um, we started seeing those blue lines go a little higher as we, as we prepared then to invest, uh, millions of dollars in the final phase of our well field relocation project. Uh, so that's what we're, uh, that's what we're working on, uh, working on now. Jumping right into what we're proposing, uh, for the year and justified again by the well field, nine to ten million dollars, uh, depending on where the, the final plans and bids come in. Um, and then not only that project, but as you saw in the capital improvement project and as we worked through the budget process, uh, there's other things that we need to be doing as well. So a, a lot of that investment relates to water and sewer infrastructure mains and connections. Uh, as we go, uh, dig up a street to, to rehab or rebuild the street, uh, we take care of that infrastructure underneath there as well. Um, and then some, some other significant investments and, and equipment and things that we need to make on a regular basis, uh, too. So, uh, with that in mind, the, the proposal for this year, uh, for an average residential user, uh, and our average residential customer uses about fifty-two hundred gallons of, of water per month, uh, we are proposing an increase that, that, uh, computes to two dollars and seventy-six cents per month or thirty-three dollars and twelve cents, uh, per year. So on the sewer side, it's a dollar forty-five per month. And on the water side, that's a dollar, uh, thirty-one per month. Uh, and you can see how that, that calculates as the percentage is there. So based on the discussion that we had with council uh, on, uh, on the, the rates that, um, that we need to charge and the things that we need to prepare for, uh, balanced with, um, the, the current state of our, our economy and the things that we are going, um, we, we are prepared to recommend a, a basically Q two, quarter to, our fiscal year begins October first, um, effective date. And so that would be something that would have to be mentioned uh, in an approving motion, uh, to this, uh, would be the effective date of October one. As the ordinance is currently read, uh, it, the effective date, uh, is July first. Uh, and so we would need to make sure that we, uh, we would, we would, um, note that, uh, different, uh, different date. So, uh, again, the, there, there are required ongoing obligations um, in addition to, to not just, uh, the well field. Uh, we do have and we provided to council the, uh, the results of the, the studies from, uh, from Baker Tilly. And, um, so this is the, the rate adjustments that we, we are recommending. To highlight for you, and we talked a little bit about this in our budget work session, but to talk about, uh, where our rates are relative to, uh, systems around our region. Um, and again, this is the eastern upper peninsula and the northern lower peninsula. And it's based on municipal water and sewer systems responding to a study uh, that's done every few years by Gosling Zubek Engineering Services. Um, at the time of the study in two thousand seventeen, Cadillac out of sixty-eight responding water systems was, uh, the tenth lowest. Uh, and so this would be a, an area where it's good to be close to, to number one. Number one would be the lowest of the sixty-eight. Uh, so being tenth lowest, um, we, we, we feel good about the affordability and, and the costs uh, of our system. A typical monthly water bill, uh, and again, on their study was based on the usage of forty-five hundred gallons. And so we, we compared what forty-five hundred gallons would cost here versus what that typical expense would be, uh, based on their study. Uh, they, they reported that a typical monthly water bill is twenty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents, um, per month. And our bill, uh, is, is as recommended on the, the rate uh, adjustments presented tonight is seventeen dollars and fifty-six cents. Uh, on the sewer side, at the time of the study, we ranked eleventh lowest out of sixty-two responding systems. Uh, and same kind of comparisons, the typical monthly sewer bill, as reported in the study, was forty dollars and, and thirty-eight cents, uh, where our bill came in at twenty-seven dollars and nine cents. So to, to total that out, the typical water and sewer bill total, uh, based on the study in two thousand seventeen was sixty-nine dollars and four cents. Um, and ours is forty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. So if you factor in, uh, water, sewer, trash, recycling and the rental of, of a cart, uh, as all residential customers are eligible for, our bill would just be right in the, the sixty-dollar range, which is still well below, about nine dollars below what a typical water and sewer bill would be, again, for these systems responding to our study. Uh, just to note, if we were to, uh, factor in what's happened to our rates locally since two thousand and seventeen, both on the water and sewer side, um, not factoring anything into anyone else's rates, but just on the Cadillac rates, uh, we would be, uh, fourteenth lowest still um, on both the water and the sewer side. Baker Tilly is the, the, uh, the advising firm that, uh, that provided some information for our Saw Grant and our water asset management plan. Both of those processes were, were completed in the last couple of years. Um, so, um, with the, with the need to maintain adequate reserves and to be able to afford the additional debt service, that will be a responsibility of the city uh, based on the, the final phase of the well field project, most significantly. Um, and to continue to, to fund other ongoing investments uh, with the cash that we have on hand. Um, the study recommended or identified the need for the, the, uh, the user charge adjustments as presented below. So you can see how those can kind of compare to, uh, what, uh, what we're presenting here tonight. Fiscal year twenty-one is the year that we are addressing tonight. Because the, the well field project, um, won't be, uh, finalized in this upcoming year, but we anticipate that we'll begin to spend down the, uh, the proceeds of the debt. There will be a need for some additional funds in twenty-one. Um, we want to avoid a fifteen percent one-year um, adjustment. I think we could all, um, agree that, that that's, uh, that's a bigger number than we're comfortable with. So we want to sort of phase in, uh, that a little bit and, and to be able to continue to, um, to provide, uh, water at a very low relative cost. Uh, on the sewer side, um, five percent this year. Um, we'll work on, on making five percent a reasonable number, trying to come in just a little bit below, uh, what they did recommend. Um, and so we're working hard to make that, that happen as well. So we're trying to balance, um, just again, the need to, to maintain, uh, provide, uh, R and M dollars for the, the system as well as what we need to do for, for continuing ongoing capital investment. Speaking of ongoing capital investment, um, since two thousand ten, again, um, this is, this is everything, uh, from a capital perspective uh, that we have paid cash for since two thousand ten. Uh, this doesn't include the well field phase one project, uh, that was paid for uh, with a drinking water revolving fund loan from, uh, from the, uh, DEQ at the time, Eagle now. Um, and so we've, we've reinvested, uh, over the last ten years, uh, six point three million dollars back into the water and sewer infrastructure. So, uh, present this, this information simply to show uh, that we really are, uh, trying to do, uh, what we need to do in terms of, of ongoing capital, uh, maintenance, uh, so that we're not faced with a, a major emergency, uh, that is unplanned and unexpected. Uh, we're trying to, to stay up on the system um, and, and do that with really a, a series... really a, a series of, of hopefully reasonable rate adjustments, especially as you, you kind of focus on the, the first chart and look at the last 14 years and, and the water average adjustment per year was just over 3%. An average adjustment from the sewer side over the last 14 years was, was 2.5%. So we, we really have because of this ongoing investment been able to avoid those, those significant 20, 30, 40% spikes that, that you may need if you had an emergency that, that you weren't prepared for. We continue to have strong reserves in the fund. And that, that's something that we've all been, I think, very, very pleased with, very proud of, of being able to, to do that. That's a very good protection against, against times where you need some, some cash to make some investments or to sustain your operations. So with that, that concludes the, the presentation. And I would be again, happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Owen, it's Marcus. Did you mention the implementation date? If you did, I missed it.
I did. That was early in the presentation.
Sorry. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, this is Mayor Philkins. At this time, we'll open the public comment. And this public comment will, although we've seen one presentation for both the water and the sewer rates, the first public comment will have to do with the increase in the water rates. Okay, hearing no one, we'll close public comment and open up the discussion for the council if there's any questions or conversation.
This is council membershipers. I had some inquiries to how the come to me as to how the percentage was reached, but I think, Owen, I think you answered that. So I just want to make folks know that, let, let folks know that I heard that and I hope you heard Owen's answers to that.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, would someone like to entertain a motion?
This is council membershipers and nobody likes to make the motion to raise water or sewer rates. I really appreciate the effort to help support our community members by deferring this to October once hopefully we are all back where we're working and things are back to at least a little semblance of normal. So given that and understanding the need for this and having clean drinking water, you know, we've, we've got to expand, we've got to keep the infrastructure in place. So I guess I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to amend section 42201 and 422023 of chapter 42 of the Cadillac City Code to increase water rates in the city of Cadillac 7.5%.
And if you could please also add the new effective date?
With the new effective date of October 1st. I wrote that down and forgot to say it.
Yeah, I'll support that motion. I mean, I support the well field plan. I think it's important to keep our water supply safe as, especially when many people think it's being threatened. We won the, you know, best tasting water in Michigan. We, we do a great job what we do and we're going to continue to do that. One of the most important jobs that a city can do.
Council member Alabas?
No.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
No.
Chipper?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. So again, this is Mayor Philkins and what we'll do is we will go ahead and open public comment as it relates to the increase in the sewer rates. Hearing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the discussion amongst the council members. I would like to say both in regards to sewer and water that, you know, Cadillac is ranking the lowest in, you know, what did you say 14? Oh, and 14th as far as the lowest rates in the response to the surveys. And yet we have one of the finest systems and professional staff to manage it, you know, in the state. And I think that our reinvestment is admirable and very much needed. As Owen said, you know, we don't want to find ourselves in a situation where, you know, we need millions and millions of dollars in improvements because everything's failing. I think Cadillac has done just an admirable job in reinvestment in our system to make it one of the very, very best.
I agree, Mayor Philkins. And it should be noted that there've been, there are communities right within our own, in our own area who have had to face this kind of thing. And the rate increases to cover the, the crisis of infrastructure were a real shocker to folks and some of you, I don't know if anybody's listening out in some of our townships, but it's, it was a corker. So doing something in an increment like this seems to be very important to maintain the infrastructure. And so being the sacrificial lamb again, I will make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to amend section 42-374 of chapter 42 of the Cadillac City Code to increase sewer rates in the city of Cadillac 5% beginning on October 1st.
Let's support that. And then I'd like to point out what was on Owen's slide earlier that we don't do what a lot of city, what a lot of cities do. You know, we take 0%, well, we can take 0%. And now that we have to take the rate increase, we're going to take the rate increase to support.
Council member Ingles?
Yes.
King?
No.
No.
Chipper?
Yes.
Alabas?
No.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, so this takes us to the fourth public hearing for this evening. And this one is to consider adoption of an ordinance establishing general appropriations. So again, I'll turn to you, Marcus.
Yeah, yes, thank you. Just a couple of brief comments. City council did go through a rather lengthy presentation as did the public as a part of our prior meetings, both during our work sessions as well as our, our regularly scheduled public meetings where we had the discussion about the budget. I am going to ask Owen to provide just a quick overview of a summary of that process that we went through. And then this evening pursuant to our charter requirement for your consideration is the appropriations ordinance itself for our fiscal year 21 budget.
Okay, great, thank you. So yeah, this is the, essentially the final step for the fiscal year 21 budget to be adopted and in effect. The charter does state that we have to do this in the second half of the month of May each year. And so this, this process tonight and, and what we've gone through leading up to this would put us in, in full compliance once again with the requirements of our, our charter as it relates to adopting a budget. So council did receive the budget on April 1st as required. And again, that's, that's an explicit date. We did have a work session that was open to the public on April 6th. On April 20th, we held our, our charter required annual public hearing related to the budget itself. Talked about different revenue sources and, and spending and mileage rates as required. We introduced the general appropriations ordinance two weeks ago on May 4th in this same format. And then tonight, again, this public, the public hearing that is, that is required because we're approving the budget by ordinance will then hopefully result in the, the adoption of the General Appropriations Act as it relates to fiscal year 2021, which will cover the period from July 1 of 2020 through June 30 of 2021. And I will just note that, that the, the adoption of the budget, the General Appropriations Act is appropriating money. And so it does require a four fifths vote of the city council.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment as it relates to this hearing and the budget. Hearing and seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to any discussion or questions from the council.
This is council member King. My concern continues to be the crisis we're in. If we relook at the budget at this point and come to a decision as other cities have come to, that there have been numerous articles through MML that we need to cut, let's say 10% because of the crisis and do it at the time that we approve our budget, it's factoring in 10% from 100% budget. If we approve this without looking critically at what money is going to be flowing out, et cetera, and we end up spending 50% of our budget by the time we say, wow, this crisis hit, hit us extremely more than what we expected. And let's say we've spent 50% of our budget, that 10% actually becomes a much greater number when we're making that action, looking back in time. I'm concerned also, just as I just got the information today on the loss project of, of finding out that we're doing it through bonding, that wasn't what was planned for, that wasn't what was before council when we approved the first brownfield plan. I feel very uncomfortable approving a budget that potentially is going to have an outflow of public money to that project that we haven't identified, we haven't even received yet. So I guess I'm throwing out my concerns again. Charter requires us to do it within timeframes and, and Owen's done a great job again of, of in normal circumstances, getting that lined up. We are not in normal circumstances and I think we have a very, very high fiduciary duty to do what other municipalities are doing and figure out where we need to tighten our belt before we move forward.
And I can respond to that some, and, and I think Marcus can add is that part of what we discussed at the work session was that very point. And I think what we had arrived at, and it seemed at the time that, that we were kind of on the same page was, you know, that, that it, it's also difficult to make, you know, dramatic decisions, I guess I would call them, or significant decisions like that without data. And just even Friday, the data started to trickle in on where we would be. And, and so we have an idea at least a little bit on one of our revenue sources of what may happen. But, but even then it, it's just, it, it's still pretty gray as far as the real data is concerned. One of the things that, that we assured council on right, right from the outset of the, the budget work session was in not knowing what we don't know, let's, let's, let's comply with the charter, let's get the budget approved. And we'll be very, very careful in, in spending. Any capital spending obviously has to come back to council that we would recommend. We're not, at this point, we haven't bid out equipment since the, the the crisis kind of really, really picked up more steam. And so we're going to be looking carefully at each and every decision that we make financially as it relates to not what we approved as a budget necessarily, but more what makes sense as the, the, the situation becomes more and more clear. And so, you know, you've seen communities that are having to, to react immediately because of their hits. Everything that, that we've looked at and that we continue to receive for the current year says we're going to meet our budget. And, you know, the, the things that we're looking at for next year, we're with you. You know, I think it's, it's definitely, you know, I'll just reiterate that assurance that we're going to be watching each and every day as new information comes out, as real data starts to trickle out in terms of where the state thinks that will be with our revenue sources. I've seen new projections for street funds and, and, you know, the budget is still realistic at this point. So that's the real data that we've, that we've seen and that we're trying to, to respond to, number one, and keep in the back of our, our minds as we move forward. So I think it's, it, it's a more difficult exercise to just say we want to take a, a 10% stab at something. You know, what if we, what if we only need two or 3% and, and you've made some, some decisions that, that may not have been quite as well informed as they may be two, three, four months from now. So that was what we talked about at the work session. That's still our, our goal is to get the budget passed with the, with the assurance and the understanding collectively that close eyes and will be, will be put on everything.
This is Mayor Philkins and I, first of all, I want to say thank you to council member King for the concern. And I, you know, in hearing Owen's input on this to us, you know, every year when we put our budget into place, we know that that is the staff's absolute best guess, best work based on what they know. And we have to put a budget in place. But that doesn't mean that we're going to go out and start spending any, you know, we're not going to start spending on things that we shouldn't start or that we shouldn't be spending on. And it's going to be with the guidance of the council, but also Marcus and Owen and the, in the city staff. It's going to be all of us working together, making the best decisions in this coming fiscal year based on what's, what we see coming out. I mean, this is a very, very strange time. But tonight, we're not making any decisions about spending money other than what is the best guess scenario. And if it's 10%, council member King, or it's 20%, then we're going to figure out how together to make that adjustment in the budget that they've presented to us. But we have to have a groundwork for those decisions to be made. And, and I hope I said that clearly enough, but we're not, we're not going to make any big decisions without everyone that's sitting in this room having a part of that discussion. And we're always going to act in the best interest of our community.
This is Marcus and I would like to just kind of echo everything that's been said and just reiterate that, you know, the, the budget document, you know, is a, is a dynamic document. We, you know, several times a year, at least since I've been, been your city manager, will come back and forth, you know, whether we're having a good fiscal year or or not a good fiscal year, but we, we do go back and forth to council a couple of times a year to amend the document when we need to. We're coming off of one of perhaps the strongest fiscal years that we've had in, in about a decade. It's obviously incredibly unfortunate that we're in this unprecedented time right now. It's obviously incredibly unfortunate that we're in this unprecedented time right now. But looking at the data that we have along with, you know, some of the estimates that we're seeing coming in, all but just, just recently, we, we still feel comfortable that we're, we're going to be in for sort of a quote unquote soft landing. And a lot of the reason why is, is because of the very fiscal conservative nature that, that our community, that our city has, starting with, with city council and, and sort of moving on down to, to us at the staff level. You know, the financial document that we prepared this time around, as well as those in the past, have always been very conservatively based. And as our finance director had mentioned a couple of moments ago, you know, even in looking at, at some of the estimates coming in, you know, we're still, we're still within a window of, of being able to meet, meet our financial targets as we, as we expect to be able to meet them. You know, all that being said, you know, through the consideration of the budget document, the, you know, the document, while it appropriates money for the budget, it doesn't appropriate or doesn't approve, you know, any, any specific project, you know, all, all of the projects, you know, that are listed in there would, would be coming back, you know, for council, for council approval, as it would in, in a quote unquote normal year as well. You know, and additionally, as far as, you know, what, what the economic impact may, may be or may not be, you know, in terms of how it'll affect our operational status, you know, we'll be certainly very communicative with city council, you know, as time goes on with respect to where we're at as a part of our regular financial updates. And certainly if we, if we need to, you know, to pivot, make an adjustment and, and look at changing either how we're providing a specific service or, or looking at either doing or not doing a specific project. Our capital projects budget is, for instance, if you guys look back at some of the paperwork, will actually tell you how some of them have been deferred, you know, for several years. And it's, it's partly because of available funding. So we're, we're very, you know, willing and able to continue down that sort of conservative approach when it comes to the budget overall. So hopefully that, that helps provide an additional comfort.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, would someone entertain a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the ordinance establishing General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2021.
This is Councilmember Shippers. I support that, understanding that as data presents itself, we will amend and adjust as needed to keep our city solvent.
Councilmember King?
No.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Boss?
No.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Mike, do you want to comment on what happens next?
Well, obviously the motion doesn't pass because it has to be approved by four fifths. So, you know, until you achieve that, you don't have an approved budget. And if you don't have an approved budget at the beginning of the fiscal year, then you have no authority to spend any money.
And this is Councilmember Shippers. So the beginning of the fiscal year is July, correct? Okay, so, and if we don't have a budget, then we are shut down, is that correct?
It certainly means you don't have authority to make expenditures. So in effect, yes, that's what it means.
So all services and things that, that we do just don't happen?
That's not true. The city shut down before when Mayor Barnett was here and everything functioned fine. So no, we've been there before with this. The city will carry on, we'll get it figured out hopefully before then, but the idea that services will halt in July is not true. It's happened before. You've been here, were you here, Marcus?
I don't ever recall, Councilmember Allen Boss.
Yeah, I, I kind of addressed that. They didn't pass it at the, the Monday night meeting, but they passed it in May.
Okay.
They have a special meeting.
You're familiar with that, Owen, aren't you?
Yeah, but it wasn't after the beginning of the fiscal year. It was, it was just later in May before the fiscal year started. So I, I guess I'm going to be looking for some guidance on, on, you know, what, what do we want? What do we want to do? What's going to make, what's going to make this budget a passable, comfortable budget? Because, you know, I don't know anything more than I knew four minutes ago before, you know, before we, we voted, if we, if we need scenarios, if we need additional information.
I, I would want to, this is Ellen Boss. I don't think any of us really like the electronic thing we're doing right here. It's what we have to do, but May 28th or something, as the restrictions are lifted of having a face-to-face meeting in the conference room, that's what I'm looking at.
I would agree with Councilmember Allen Boss. You know, we have a responsibility to set the budget and get it approved. And the only way that we're going to be able to do that is for all of us to come together and figure out how to do that. So I would like to see us schedule a special meeting to be able to have that discussion if that's acceptable to all of you.
Very much so.
You, let me just interject. The city council itself is permitted to meet in person. You are critical infrastructure. You can allow the public to attend by video, but the council itself can meet in person as long as you abide by social distancing, the CDC protocols, Department of Health and Human Services. So you are, the council itself is permitted to meet in person.
I would like to do that. And I think probably we should, we should do that as soon as possible.
This is Councilmember Shippers. This is Councilmember Shippers. We will have to find a place to do that because the conference room is not large enough to provide for social distancing. And I'm, I'm very concerned about being in a small room with a group of people. I am very much at risk from this virus. And I would ask that wherever we do this, that we all agree to not only the distancing, find a place large enough that we can meet far apart from one another. Maybe the school could offer a, a spot, but also that we all respect one another in masks up, please.
I would think, although I, I don't know, but I would think that the council or that the council chambers is large enough for five people. You know, it, like I said, you have the ability to include both video as well as in person or access by the public, as well as members of the staff, the council to that extent. But I would think that the council chambers are big enough to separate by at least six feet and then some.
I would, I would agree with that. Are you comfortable with that?
Me?
Yes.
Shippers? Yes, as long as we really are mindful of that. That's, it's, it scares me, let me just tell you that much.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
This is, this is Marcus. So what I'm looking at is the calendar. Thursday is the 28th, Friday is the 29th, and then your next regularly scheduled meeting is on Monday, the 1st. I must admit, I did not have a chance to, to really pour through the newest governor's order, I think it was 90-something that came out this afternoon. But from listening to the city attorney, it sounds like as long as we still provide access to the public remotely, that won't be, won't be an issue, which, so I guess I would put a vote in, if you will, for our chambers, I think that might provide us with connection points that I'm, that we're familiar with and whatnot, so we can still run a remote meeting at the same time as we have, have us in person. So if we're looking at dates, is there a preference for anybody, the 28th and the 29th? And then additionally echoing Lynn's comment, you know, I think, you know, we can provide, you know, maybe a couple of scenarios based on what ifs, right? You know, what if our, you know, our property taxes plummet? Or what if, you know, some other major revenue source should completely, completely dry up? You know, what would be our sort of phased approach to making, you know, service changes or, or other types of changes operationally in order to keep ourselves moving forward? But, you know, aside from just taking that stab at it, is there anything specific you wanted to see? Because we'll need, we'll need to gear that up pretty quick if we're looking at meeting at the tail end of next week.
Right. My suggestion would be that if there are thoughts by any council member, that you get that information to Owen or to Marcus, I guess get it to Marcus first, so that they can start preparing for that discussion. I mean, certainly, we talked about the budget back in our budget sessions, but that, that was before COVID-19. So we need to have some more conversation.
And this is Councilmember King. I agree, specific questions, for example, I can come up with a list of specific things, Owen, that I think you'll be able to find and educate us on, which I think is the key thing here. And then, two, you know, part of what I had raised, and I don't know if it's Owen or Marcus, but it seems like other municipalities are taking certain actions in relation to their budgets, so they don't get caught short, because Owen, I understand it's a gray area. But I think if we make sure we don't get short, caught short upfront, it's a lot less expensive than getting caught short after we've spent a substantial part of our budget.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's all over the board. I, I'm on a manager's listserv and have seen, have seen over the last few weeks, municipalities talking about, especially those that rely heavily on an income tax, something, something that we don't even have, are, are saying how they're having to go through and do furloughs and do other such things, whereas, you know, some of the smaller communities are, are kind of like us, are humming along, not that they may not have to react, but it's like you mentioned and Owen mentioned, it's gray. So, you know, there's, there are probably examples or samples out there for just about every different scenario. Everyone's a little different, so.
Well, and I, I would, I would agree with that, but we have to figure out what's best for us, for our community. And so, you know, we, we hear about, and I hear it through my mayor's group too, about different things that are happening in different communities, but we need to think about those things as it relates to the city of Cadillac, and that's the discussion we need to have.
And just if I can interject, when you're talking about dates, my suggestion would be at, at the latest, the next week, because your charter specifically says prior to the end of May. So I, I would like this, and my preference is obviously to comply with the provision of the charter as it's written.
So I've got a question. Can I ask a question? So if, if we just do a work session on the 28th, we'll, and then have a, a new document, do we have to go through the same process and present it and then wait and have hearings and, and that with, with a new document? Or, that's what I'm, the reason I'm saying that is because if we have to do all that, if we have a completely different budget that has to be re-presented, and think of the timeframe that it took to do this, and wouldn't it be, I'm, I'm so go with, with doing, doing a work session and looking at what we need to do, but if, if it were passed and then do a session to what needs to be amended and put amendments in right away, would that be a reasonable compromise and an expedient solution to this? If we don't have to go through the whole process because we have a different document, then of course my question or my suggestion is moot. But if, if we do, so.
That's not, that's not a bad idea, but I, I guess I would bounce that over to Councilmember Allen Boss and King to hear their thoughts on that.
This is Councilmember King. I really think we need to be able, or at least I feel I need to be able to look citizens in the eye and say, I actually looked into this and got the information we need so that we're making an educated decision versus just passing something that at this point, because of the crisis, I need more information on what the impacts are going to be to be able to approve a budget. That, that's just my personal thought.
Yeah, a lot of negative things coming my way from taxpayers. I have to deal with them concerning the loss as much as I think it's possibly a good thing. I don't want the taxpayers to become landlords. It's a banker's job, not ours. So, you know.
We're not, we're not talking about the loss here, we're talking about the budget.
Is Councilmember Allen Boss, are you saying that you're not going to pass the budget that has the loss plan in it?
That's true.
This, this one does not have that in there. As we discussed during that public hearing, there would be two additional, at least, decisions that would need to be made, both the budget amendment for that project and the awarding of that project itself.
I have to look the taxpayers in the eyeballs and talk to them like I always do. So now explain it to me so I can explain it to them. You handed me this without a word being said to me other than your demonstrations and a lot of questions I had that I'll carry into the discussion with you. If you think I'm ever going to pass anything without being fully aware of everything involved, you're wrong. But we'll find that out on the 28th. Thank you.
So I, I think that, you know, we, we have gone through the process this time around and, and I understand that perhaps we should have done it differently, but no differently than how we've done it in the past, providing, you know, council to meet during our work sessions and then in our regular sessions with, with public hearings. And so certainly I apologize if there's something that you feel you were unaware about before going into this meeting, but certainly the finance department and my staff didn't do anything with intention to, to keep you sort of out of a loop. You were in the same loop that, that we, we put everybody, you know, in the council within. And, you know, additionally, if, if folks are getting calls from concerned or angered constituents, you can, you can always bounce them to the staff to also try to field and assist in writing information. We're, we're more than willing to talk with people and to try to educate them with, with whatever the, the issues, you know, the issues might be. Looking, you know, looking back at when this, this happened, and I don't recall how many years ago, but maybe it was five or six years ago or so at this point, where the city council didn't approve the Appropriations Act and rather did it about a week or so later, it did not require a complete rebooting of the entire public process. We met, and I don't recall if it was in a work session or just a regular special session, but either way, even when the council meets in a work session, it still constitutes a special meeting under the Open Meetings Act. And so Mike, unless there's something that I'm missing on that, where, where you think it requires some additional public hearings, I would assume that we would be okay to, instead of meeting up at the tail end of next week, for council to meet to consider perhaps some additional information that we can gather between now and then to provide some additional comfort for the budget.
Mike, that was a question for you.
Mike, that was a question for you.
I saw him putting his headphones there, I think he missed.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. I think if the question has to do with whether, or to what extent you could, or need to hold a public hearing again, I'll have to look at those provisions. It's, I don't think that you would have to hold another budget hearing, you've done that pursuant to the charter. It would be the notice provisions on the adoption of an ordinance, which is the General Appropriations Act, and whether or not, because you've held a public hearing, that you could simply amend that ordinance to change the figures in that General Appropriations Act. So essentially, adopting the ordinance as amended, which in a typical manner, you would have the authority to do, right? You would hold a public hearing, you would then, even if you didn't make a decision following that public hearing, you could, at the next meeting, then even amend those provisions of that ordinance to reflect the new budget numbers, if there are budget numbers, and then adopt that. But I'll have to look at that. Even if, even if you had to redo that portion of it, the charter provides for a public hearing not held sooner than five days after publication of the proposed ordinance itself. So you still would have time to publish it.